Ready to begin our work session of January ninth. I'm here in the conference room, just let everyone know that this meeting will be recorded. Is there any public comment before we move on? No, okay. We do have one new item listed here, it is the farm colony presentation. And so I will ask Jeff to share with us. And Dan, any contributors?
Yeah, so obviously, this is something that's been kicked around for a while. It's a discussion about the farm colony and what we would do with it. Potentially, a couple of years ago, I guess a year and a half ago, we had gotten a grant to do a plan for the landfill property, which at the time, we wanted to reutilize that property in a way that would be related to recreation. We felt like we could. But we kept having delays in the closure of the site and some of the other things due to, you know, our work with the EP, which eventually was successful. However, at the time, we got concerned about it. So Dan and I requested that we reallocate that grant funding from DCNR in order to focus on the farm colony to put a plan together for redeveloping the property in a way that would be more functional than it is currently. So over the past, you know, six months or so, Dan and I've worked with MAC and Engineering, who have reached, have had a series of meetings with people in the community, different sports organizations, different recreation organizations, in order to gather information about the site. They've also done site reviews and kind of evaluating the situation there to determine what the best use of the site would be going forward if we did do a redevelopment. And then at the end of that, they came up with what essentially is in this packet. Now, I know if you fast forward to the end, there's a giant number at the end of it. And I know that your instinct is going to be to focus on that number, which is thirteen million dollars for the entire renovation of the site. Now, I bring this up because this plan is fluid. It's in phases. That money is not to be, we're not, it's not a situation where there needs to be thirteen million dollars tomorrow in order to do the redevelopment. So I'm going to walk through the plan and walk through the phases of the plan. But really, what we're here today to focus on is the first phase of the plan. And I'll get to that later. Dan, stop me if there's anything that you want to add to it. And then also, Dr. Bill Clark has been kind enough to show up as a parent constituent who's a part of the group that we put together in order to kind of push for an adaptive ball field in the county. So the first item that I wanted to focus on with this is there are a lot of stormwater issues with the property at the farm colony. As a result, at least one of the ball fields is practically unusable that's up there. Part of this is due to the move, the transfer of wetland property up above the ball fields, which was done in order to make room for Schultz dealership to have their development on Pennsylvania, on Market Street Extension, Route sixty-two. And as a result, there's been a lot of water issues just across the board on that site. So one of the things that we would focus on in a redevelopment of the space is a channel that would potentially run or a pipe that would run adjacent to the property up to the road and then potentially we would bore under the road and then have the water drain into the river on the other side of the road. This is a huge piece of this discussion just because in order to do any develop up there, at some point, we're going to have to address the stormwater issue. So that's kind of a secondary part of this that we would discuss moving forward. As far as the first phase goes of this, if you go to, it's not the last page. I apologize because it's the third to the last page. It's the map with the numbers on it. So there are four phases of this project overall. And what this is, what the, in total, if this was done completely, it would make this property the focal point of recreation, certainly in the northern tier, if not in the entire county. And most of the stuff that we tried to put into this are things that are not readily available north of the city. Like, so once you get into northern of the county, most of the stuff that's here is not really available to anybody on the northern end of the county. So that's a big piece of it. And we also wanted to put some niche elements into it so that the park would have a lot more utilization than just what you would typically have in some of the other areas. So the first piece is this phase one. Now, this can, in my opinion, the phase one can take many forms. And I think there's a lot of different ways that we can shake costs off of it in order to get started on this redevelopment project. The first phase involves a parking lot, a basically a recreation facility, like a building that would have office space, storage space, a space for, you know, miniature training facilities, some other things. And again, this would be used by all of the organizations that would potentially help manage the site overall. And then the adaptive ball field is built into the first phase. The first phase does not interfere with any of the other workings on the site currently. So if it's, even if the first phase is the only phase that's built, it'll be a major improvement on the site without requiring a great deal of additional, you know, maintenance or long-term fundraising on the county's part. Currently, there's no official parking up there and there's no paved road. And so, you know, most of the parents that utilize the space park in the grass, there's dirt roads. If you're, I find a nickel for every time I went up there with my kids and was driving on the dirt road and kicked up a huge cloud of dust that then hit all the people in their launchers next to the, the ball fields. It's not an ideal situation. So in this case, we would create like a defined parking space. I believe this would create like some well over a hundred and fifty parking spaces up there that would be the bulk of the parking on the site. The adaptive ball field, as you can see, is smaller than a regular Little League field. And each of these fields have been designed to incorporate multiple sports. So our intention is to build something that would also incorporate a miniature soccer field on it. There would be turf, there would be all-weather. And this is something, again, so that people with multiple needs would be able to use the site, not just for baseball and softball, but also for soccer. The, what the, what the adaptive ball field does is it creates a bunch of, and I'll turn over to Bill in a second to have him give his two cents on this because this is really important. The adaptive ball field has a turf surface that it can be utilized by people in wheelchairs, people with walkers. It's a smooth surface, so there, anybody with kind of like ambulatory movement issues, it makes it easier for them to function in that space. There are also elements that we can incorporate into the field that would be sensory friendly and some other things that would help with people that have either auditory issues or issues with sound. The, as far as the facility goes, I just want to state that that's really optional. This is something that they put into the site and we would like to have it somewhere in the site eventually. But I don't think that it needs to be incorporated into this initially. All that said, Bill, would you like to give your piece on the adaptive ball field element of this?
Absolutely. I think this is a continuation of the group that has had other projects in the city. Lacy Park, Adam Nio, myself, and King has kind of come to the table. We've talked Rotary. The missing part has been, I guess, a real success with the adaptive playground. And then that was phase one. Phase two was the R.I. surface, we did very well there. All of that was fundraising. We partnered with WCBA, we worked with the Rotary Club. So that same cadre of individuals is on this project as well. I understand the larger scope of the farm home, the rest of one particular piece, obviously. Right now, we're looking for just a place to have a home to get that started. And then that, that group that I just identified earlier is ready to roll, is ready to start fundraising, is ready to take on that element as they have done in the past. So we do have, I want to say, a pipeline or individuals that we approached before for funding. And we would just recycle the wagons and get those pupils to play yet again for the adaptive field. And it has been very successful. Jeff had the coach and then King became the coach. Our numbers have grown immensely. The number of supporters who come to those events just to help with the kids has almost doubled. And we, last year, had a game over at Bradford. They were running the last division for the Little League World Series. And before that game, our kids played. Now that coach in Bradford who runs their challenger league wants to partner with us with our challenger league, where before we would play other Little League teams, which was great. But now we would play other challenger teams from around the area. So there's all sorts of potential for growth for this temperature group. And I would like to have some kind of discussion on Special Olympics. I'm on Special Olympics board. I haven't been able to organize schedules, but I know it's not just for the kids. We're looking for, it could be something that the adults could use. And when you attend an event and you see a kid running around to the bases in a walker, it's very motivating, very uplifting. But seeing him do it in the dirt in your butt and knowing that he could do it on a surface where it would be less resistant so they could enjoy that more, just makes you smile a little bit broader. So I think it's a great project. Again, I'm here representing different people who couldn't make it today. And we really support this project, whether it be farm home, Bets, wherever we may land, that challenger field is our next step to put a footprint, fingerprints somewhere in the community.
Very good. Dan, you've had a history of working on Special Olympics. Would you like to talk about what your view is of the adaptive ball field piece, just this first phase?
Yeah, it's definitely a needed asset for the county. I know that we struggle to find places where athletes can be able to train and compete locally. This would give us the opportunity to address those with certain types of needs that we have difficulty in right now.
Yeah, so a couple-
Is there any Ruben Lacy Park for something like that? I mean, just given the fact that you've got that-
Is there, well, there's two, there's a couple of different ways to look at this. So we have multiple sites that we're trying to look at. That originally was one of them. One of the big challenges we had is the retention pond there is so huge that it takes up enough space that it makes, there's not room for a ball field, especially when you factor in parking that has to go associated with it. The other thing was is we, I think that there's an interest in integrating this into other things. We didn't want the Lacy Park to be the special needs park per se, where everything's consolidated into one spot. We've had continuous conversations with the city about the possibility of utilizing Bets. We're still having those conversations. In this case, when we were putting this together, originally, the adaptive ball field wasn't a part of it. But, you know, it was just kind of like, well, if we're going to do, do it at all, you know, that seems like a place, that wouldn't be a bad place to do it, especially since the Little League spends a lot of their time there and that's a huge chunk of the space. A couple of things I wanted to stress. One is, is the adaptive ball field is not just for persons with special needs. We've heard from a lot of different people that once these are implemented, everybody wants to use them on a regular basis. I would make the case that it would be a similar situation as to Lacy Park, where that is one of the most utilized parks actually in the county. Secondarily, I think it's a draw. Like, there aren't that many adaptive ball fields in the region. The nearest that I'm aware of is Erie. There may be one in Dubois, but I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. I have a feeling that we'll have people from Jamestown coming down to utilize this in other places. The other piece of this, and this goes to like the later parts of this discussion, is turning this space into a tournament-ready location where it's going to be a draw for travel teams and others to come and do tournaments and do, you know, other types of bigger events. And, you know, even in, whether it's Dubois and some of these other places that have put in these types of facilities, they've seen a huge amount of influx of people, especially, you know, when you're thinking about people that we want to move here, work here, and their kids are interested in baseball. This is another draw for them to come here and stay, to get engaged. So in this case, if we implement, if we did the first phase, which is really the big thing that we want to talk about, this would address the parking situation up there. It would address the entrance to the site, which is not ideal. It would add a ball field that is adaptive for persons with special needs. It doesn't necessarily have to have the facility on it, but it could. But if we just did the ball field, the entrance, the parking, and then some of the concrete paths and stuff, we really feel like we could keep this to a million dollars, maybe a million and a half investment in order to do that space. That, from our perspective, like fundraising-wise, seems very doable, especially if we can get a fifty percent match from DCNR to do the space. There are other funding options that we could use. This wouldn't require the city, the county per se to have a much greater level of investment in time and energy. And if we could get it done, then we could have the discussion about phase two, phase three, phase four, and doing some of the other bigger things. So that's why I think that this is, this should be like an attractive option because it's a good start in trying to turn this space into a legitimate setup. Does anybody have any questions about that first piece?
Well, I'm just looking at the version of phase one A and phase one D. It's looking more like five million dollars.
Yeah, I mean, I-
But I see two-point-seven of that is the concession building.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's a lot there can be cut out.
Okay.
Like, again, the, when we, when we have MAC to do this, we're going from trying to get a grant standpoint. So we want everything that we could possibly have in it. When it comes to like our fundraising targets, we feel like the field should be about five hundred thousand, maybe seven hundred thousand. Depending upon the size and how much we plug into it. Parking lot, we feel would be five hundred thousand, you know, somewhere in that range. And I think that, and then even with the, you know, like the entry piece and kind of redoing roads and some of that, I think that we could end up in a one to one-point-five million range to try to do that. And again, at this stage, it's not something that we're necessarily asking for county investment financially. Certainly, like, there are things that I've considered as far as like, you know, the landfill closure fund taking some portion of that and putting it into that as a match to help get things started. But again, today, as far as like the county having a financial investment, that's not what's being requested. What's being requested is essentially the green light to say, if we can get the money together and get the grant funds together and get foundation funding together in order to build this thing, can we do the first phase? That's it. Like, and then once the first phase is done, then we can have a conversation about the second phase. And Dan, could you talk a little bit about your experience with the bike hike trail?
Sure.
Because that's kind of a similar venue.
Yeah, when we looked at the price tag, it was kind of scary on the surface. Jeff's point about phasing it is the wise way to go. We built the bike trail. We built it in phases as well. We secured grant funding and other funding sources. So there was no cash outlay by the county itself. It came from other sources. I believe that it's reasonable to think that we can do the same thing with this facility. When we had the Parks and Recreation Plan completed by MAC back last year, they provided an appendix that had a new, several different funding sources that are out there outside of state agencies. There are even situations where some professional ball teams have kicked in funding for local projects such as this to help bring them to fruition. We, we're sensitive to the need that this has to accommodate ADA because today, you need to do that. And so the way this is laid out, it definitely does that. It can do a nice hard surface for parking areas. There are identified ADA parking spots on both of those parking areas, either in one-handed or the accessibility to all of the pieces of the facility would be easy for those with physical challenges. We looked at a couple of different layouts when MAC was presenting this. And Jeff and I met with them a few times on Zoom calls. And so on this being the best option. In addition to what you're seeing there with the ball fields and the playing area and so forth, this also includes a nature area where you've got a walking trail around the entire perimeter and a, and kind of like a nature education component to it as well. So I can see other entities wanting to take advantage of what that would offer. Jeff talked a little bit about stormwater. That definitely is a problem up there, not only for the field itself, but for the businesses that are located just east of that. There have been problems over the years where stormwater runoff has become an issue. So one of the things we definitely have to do is take care of that, whether it be onsite or off, that's still to be determined. But anyway, what you're seeing is a phased development that, yes, has a large price tag on it, but I think some creative ways of looking at financing and doing this in a phased approach is definitely the way to go. This can definitely be an asset for the county. Right now, one of the largest areas we have is Bets Park. But I hear all the time from the Little League groups that there are never enough playing fields. This does add, I think, one more plus the other field that Jeff was talking about for special needs. But it's, I think, a wonderful layout for something that can really turn into a good asset for the county.
Yes, so I just wanted to quickly tear through the rest of the phases. So the second phase obviously is the main ball field piece. So there's four ball fields facing outward. This makes the best use of the space. There's more concrete access. Each of the fields has space for a soccer field to be put on top of it. So it can also be used for soccer year-round. And then there's playground spaces that are incorporated into it as well as like batting cages and some other stuff. So this would again expand the scope of the park so that it would be utilized far beyond just even Little League. That would be a pretty big piece and it'd be pretty disruptive to the Little League. The first phase would not disrupt the operation of the Little League or any of the utilization of the park. The third phase is, the phase is kind of all of the additional sports. Now, they put a sand volleyball thing in there. We've already had a conversation, that's not going to be in there because I can't even remember the last time somebody used a sand volleyball thing. But what is incorporated into this is a basketball court, a tennis court, pickleball courts, and then any other type of like niche sporting activity that there isn't really access to in the space. So that, this is kind of, can be reconfigured. There's no basketball accessibility north of the city that we're aware of, that I'm aware of. It's, you know, so that would be a huge thing. Obviously, with the discussion about pickleball, it seems only appropriate to put a pickleball piece into this. You know, and then there's no tennis accessibility north of the city either. And then finally, the big, the other big piece, you know, again, I think the third phase is kind of a, I think that it would be good to do that. It's not something that has to be done. The fourth piece of it is kind of the biggest upgrade, other than maybe in phase one, which is this kind of large stadium ball field, which would provide for bleachers, additional parking, additional amenities. And again, this would be like the thing that would be the draw for the entire facility, even beyond the additional four new fields, where they're going to be able to have tournament, tournaments played here. People, teams from out of state are going to be able to come in and play and perform. They'll be able to host a larger number of events. And it'll provide a nicer amenity for the kids who do play and, you know, when they have their championship games and stuff. So originally, we had a pump track and archery built into this, but somebody was concerned because the archery was facing into the-
Kids.
How's that going though?
Well, there was a slight concern over that. And then, you know, and then secondarily, the ball fields had to be configured differently and I had concerns over, you know, cars getting hit and some other things. So in total, that's the, you know, again, that's the setup. Each of the ball fields would be, part of the reason that there's some costs associated with this, again, is related to the runoff issue, where the ball, ball fields would be raised slightly in order to provide for better drainage. There'd be drainage elements built into them. And then once this would be completed, it would be one of the nicest sports facilities in the northwest of Pennsylvania. And I think that would be, it would make the county competitive recreation-wise to, you know, to, you know, when it comes to investing in baseball and other things. Oh, and one last thing is, is there's a, there's a walking trail that goes around the entirety of the property. That ends up being like one-point-five miles, something along those lines. I think that's a huge draw too. In the northwest corner, there's a, there's a small facility that would be like a nature observatory and something that we were talking about, potentially, we would engage the school district and maybe the conservation district to have some like educational amenities or use that as a gathering place. The walking trail, I think, is really a bigger, is a really big piece of this just because as Dan expands the bike hike trail up north of the mall, it could legitimately stop across the street from the facility. We could have the traffic slowed down there, have a light and enable people to walk across there. So hike all the way up to the site and then hike around the bike hike trail at the site.
And there are some other options to look at too, to get people to the site from the bike trail, in addition to just crossing the road. We have a similar intersection down there of Aldi's and RVs. It may be incorporated to get focused on the backside of the road and head on through. One thing I wanted to point out is there are two top lots that are located at this facility. And the reason behind that is, while parents may have younger children with them, their siblings playing a ballgame, the top lots would keep the youngsters busy while their older siblings are playing in a ballgame. That would be a credit.
Isn't that what electronic devices are for?
We're trying to make them accessible. By the way, we have a big site to know electronic devices allowed in this park.
We were talking about doing something along those lines anyway, but the Little League and several of the other groups that utilize this requested that specifically because they're, everybody, when, especially when stuff's going on in the park, there's people everywhere. And so, you know, I think that would be a really nice amenity. So-
Now, did you say that Dubois has a facility similar to this?
There's one down in Clarion County.
Well, the Clarion has-
They're all scattered all over.
Clarion has a county park. Dubois, and the only reason I bring up Dubois is they very specifically have a major, that's even more extravagant, I think, than this ball facility. And the reason I bring it up is, is whenever I'm talking about the farm colony, everybody's talking about us investing in ball fields. They bring up Dubois and why can't we have something like Dubois? And I've been down to Dubois to talk to people down there about it. And that, we would be doing something similar to that here. It wouldn't be specifically baseball-focused. Like, that facility is entirely related to, as far as I know, just baseball. The same thing, they have capital campaigns, they had grant funding, and they put together. Now, they're adjacent to the Little League Hall of Fame. I can't remember what, I can't remember what the, I don't know why I'm looking it up.
Weird.
Okay, so I think that they looked at it like that they were close enough to it that they were going to use that as a, as a pitch for the. But anyway, my point is, is like, and then Clarion has a nice county park. That's the one that Dan was referring to.
I've been to that one many times.
Well, there you go. I have never been to that.
Yeah?
I just heard about it.
If MAC had worked on a number of these types of projects, we could get you a list.
Yeah, it would be interesting to understand kind of what other investments were in something similar size. And then my, and then my only other question that I had, which I have others, but who manages the cost of operations? Because you're going to have concessions there, you're going to have utilities, you're going to- This is a county-owned, I don't know who takes that on today. I wouldn't say- I don't know who takes that on today, I wouldn't say.
That's part of the lease that we have with the Little League. So they handle all of their operations and whatnot. That's why in this case, like for this phase one, my view was we kind of leave the concession building out of it, at least initially, and just focus on the parking and the adaptive ball field because that seemed very doable to me and it wouldn't require the county to kind of reconfigure dramatically what it's doing currently. Like, so we would have an agreement with the, we would continue the agreement we have with the Little League. My view of of this, if it were to, if we were to take it all the way and all the other stuff were to get built and everything, this is that there would be a combination of the county having a recreation director, which it should eventually have, in my opinion, anyway. They would have some element of oversight on on the overall site. And then secondarily would be an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with either Conalongo Township or, you know, some of the other organizations that would utilize it to manage the maintenance because the county doesn't wanna give it a go pony where it's sending its maintenance director out to do maintenance on the site. And and technically, this is an asset to those organizations, so they should take part in that. You know, it's either that or we would have to charge fees, you know, start a fee structure in order to pay for the management of the site. But and as I've said at the time again, if you want nice things, somebody has to pay for it.
That's how life works.
Yeah.
Is there still a consideration of a recreational authority being established?
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, from my perspective, yeah, that's something that should be on the table. I I don't think that if, like I said, if we execute phase one as I've discussed, it wouldn't require that, it wouldn't require a recreation director. Um, from my perspective, if the county could um give this group a a green light to at least try to say, listen, if you can put the money together, if you can find the sources and everything, we will allow you to build this um phase one and then go from there. Like, I don't think that, from my perspective, other than the time of like, you know, like staff time for Dan or the grant writer from the county, um, kind of you being utilized to research some of this stuff, the county wouldn't necessarily have to command any. Because, I mean, am I wrong though? I mean, really honestly, we're just looking for a place where somebody says it's okay for you to build here.
Well, it sounds like if that's the case, you might be able to do some revenue funding that will benefit that property as it relates to the infrastructure um, for stormwater and these parking, those types of things.
Yeah, I mean, the adaptive ball field, like this is one of the things that I've said to the group is I have no doubt we can get this funded. Like, the adaptive ball field, really, you should be able to get the funds for it. There's, there's so many foundations and stuff associated with this. And uh, I think that for the Little League, it would be a sign of the, an investment in the space, you know, and and would give them an amenity, a further amenity. And then download, you know, once we get that done, then we can have a conversation about, okay, let's, how do we redo these ball fields and and that.
I'm assuming that Mack and Engineering or whomever evaluated the um, that whole area as far as whether this is an appropriate build or an overbuild for the number of ball fields as well as the number of parking spaces, all of those types of things. And I'm looking at this and saying, you know, I sometimes I don't wanna.
The, we provided them with a list, a long list of entities would have interest in this and they interviewed all of them before they started out to design each other.
Yeah, I think, I think, so a couple of things. One is, is the intention here is for this to not be the ballpark field. Like, there are ball parks on it, baseball's certainly a focus of some aspect of it, but the long-term vision is, is that it becomes a um, you know, like a focal point for recreation in the entire northern end of the county. Like, so that's why there's a a walking trail, that's why there's playgrounds, that's why there's other sports that are gonna be integrated into it. It would be um, you know, I think that this would even make it a nicer space. I don't wanna say nicer space than Bets because Bets has its own things that are nice about it, it's next to the river. You know, it's, it, there's a lot of green space, this has that as well. Um, you know, but it would be, it would be the focal point of that side of the county, you know.
Okay, anything else, any other comments?
I mean, I guess, I guess the question again is for the commissioners is, I mean, do you have an issue with moving forward with this? Or what, if you do, what are your concerns and how can we address them? And having concerns is okay, there's nothing wrong with that.
No, I mean, I I would, I think we'd always wanna double check and revet some of what would be in this particular phase. And if we can do fundraising for it and it wouldn't cost operationally the county any more money, I don't have a problem with it at all.
Yeah, so like, as as for instance, there's four fields up there now, um. Is there five? There's four. I think, I'm pretty sure there's four and at least there there might be.
Maybe four usable ones.
Yeah, there's four usable ones and then there's a fifth like tiny one that's that's completely underwater. And even out of the four usable ones, really, three of them are in decent shape. So they're, they're heavily utilized. And then the park itself is heavily utilized even though there's no amenities on it. People take their dogs up there, people walk around up there, um, you know, and and so the other, my other issue with this, the other re, the other impetus for this is it's either this or in my opinion, you completely, you sell the property and have it be developed. Because honestly, as it stands today, it's a great asset for the people who utilize it, but it's under, it could be utilized to a greater extent than what it is. Like, it, the, the, um, you know, the, it's a gorgeous space, it has a ton of potential. Everybody that goes up there says that, um, and the county owns it. So this would be, this would be a way to take that space and take it from something that's um, a nicety for the groups that utilize it and turn it into something that's actually gonna be even more heavily utilized. Um, from the parking standpoint, like you were asking about the parking, that would get filled up like that. Like with the, between the events that they have, tournaments and everything else, it would get utilized and. And in fact, you wouldn't, right now, I would say that the lack of parking up at that space is a liability, to be honest. And like it, it, you know, because people park in the grass all over the place, like, you know. Um, I would tell, I would also make the case that if we do this and there's soccer fields and the soccer groups can use it, then their folks aren't gonna have to park in the highway and try to get out with their kids and not get them.
And and I guess the other thing, you know, was as a, how do I say it? Being a critic, from a critic's perspective, I can see the soccer people saying, well, this is the me too movement. We want something just as nice, right? And so you have to always take that into consideration as well.
Does accommodate, if you look at the color of the.
Yeah, it is.
This little, oh, you have a color one?
No, I don't have a color.
The color one, you can see the outlines of the soccer fields in the baseball playing area. It's quite, the conversion is quite simple.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and that's the thing too, is is for the investment being made, the goal is to incorporate as many sports into the space as possible, given the circumstances. Because honestly, I wouldn't do it if that wasn't the case. Like, to just have just a baseball facility, it's not worth it. Like, that's why all of the other things are kind of incorporated into what's being put here.
So for my, for my part, I think an earlier idea that you'd had, I don't know, one, two, three years ago, was start that recreation authority, transfer the deed over to that authority and then have this authority be the thing that clearly manages the whole complex. And I think part of the confusion and frustrations we've had over the years has to do with this um sense of who owns it, who's developing it, who's responsible for it. I think if we created that, we have recreation authority, like we've talked about, um, it would be much clearer. Um, so I still would kind of hope that.
Yeah, no, I I totally agree with you. Like, let's put it this way, even if you guys said no, like to this, just to cross the board, I would say that we need a recreation authority.
We kind of, we've got trails that.
Yeah.
That are existing trails as well as future extensions, that that authority could be responsible for as well. Fundraising and maintenance and all that.
Oh, the event coordination, all of this stuff, you know.
Yeah.
So so I guess I'm saying yes, I just would want it to be kind of under the auspices of a future recreation authority.
Okay.
And sans that, I almost lean towards no because we want to be back in the same position of in a year or so, no one's driving in, no one's managing it. There's confusions to who owns it and whose assets they are and so on.
Yeah.
He, either way, what you're saying is you're gonna have to put more manpower to it because if you have a recreation authority, then somebody's gonna have to be in it. The issue comes down to the authority now is an independent organization. And so it has to manage itself.
Right, whereas right now, you're frankly, one of the driving forces behind this and.
Yeah.
Maybe you will continue in that in some capacity in the future.
As I've said, as I've said before, I mean, it's not my intention to move to Siberia, like, you know. I'm gonna be here, you know, and and my thing is, is I agree. I mean, like, I'm vested because my kids play in the challenger division, like, I wanna see the ball field get built. If you guys say no, guess what? I'm gonna leave here and go down to the city and we're gonna have a conversation down there until they get it. And if they don't get it, I'm gonna find a municipality somewhere and this cavalry is gonna get it. And then I'm gonna give them the money, like that we raised, like whatever, like it just.
No, I think that's, I mean, I, it, it's a, it's a logical idea, you know. I definitely did have a little bit of sticker shock as the avenue, because I reviewed this earlier and said, that's a lot of money. And he said, well, you know, there's some um opportunities to fundraise that are unique um, and, you know, are gonna cost the county money. And I'm certainly supportive of that. I just wanna be mindful as to the actual operating costs at some point in the future.
Yeah, I think it's, I'm gonna throw my two cents in because I'm a, I like soccer and a dad around here. And I think this kind of thing is absolutely vital to what uh Warren is um gonna be and and have it offer people. You know, for ten, twenty, thirty years from now to come, I think it's, I, it's fantastic, it's a really important idea. I think an authority is probably the best vehicle moving forward for a lot of reasons. It requires a lot of attention to be paid to to manage it. And um, I mean, it's, as an authority, as municipal corporations, it has, it has funding counters. So there's, there's backs not believed if necessary. Um, I think there's just some, some management, no sort of facilities, but I think the different areas that need we look at, um, that you're gonna have to navigate, that that's important. Um, I encourage you guys to talk to the soccer community. Um, I think they'd be really interested in in uh what you guys are are planning. But uh, you know, there's, there's different players at the table there that, you know, are are worth talking to yourself.
So I guess secondarily, like, if the, if the management question is the, is the one question that's like a concern with this? Is like, how is it gonna be handled going forward? Um, I agree that the recreation authority is the best vehicle to kind of associate with that. Do you guys mind if we use um, like, some of the closure fund money, like a little bit to mine that and put something together so that that can be created, whether it's a plan or a strategy or something? And I don't mean like, I'm I'm talking like, you know, because it's gonna require some time legally, like legal, you know, evaluation from the solicitor and others and the bills associated with that. Um, because I think that, you know, our view, my view of the the closure fund money was always that it was either gonna be used for recreation or conservation of some type. And it wouldn't cost the county from its general fund any money, but money out of that. And in that way, like, I, obviously, my time's limited at this stage, like, long term, that, you know, whether it would be a few thousand dollars to put it together so that that can be brought to the commissioners and then yea or nay or change the fiddle with.
Yeah, no problem, it's four, five grand or something, go to finding that, sure.
Okay, because then we could have that relatively shortly and then you can say, okay, this just really doesn't seem plausible, like a weapon.
You know, maybe even talk to Dubois, just have that general discussion about, okay, you know, this is built. You know, what's, what's it costing you, what's the manpower associated? So that we are in this eyes wide open as it relates to, it's a very nice facility, we wanna keep it nice. We raised the money for it, however else that happened. And then, you know, we wanna make sure that piece of its viability continues on.
Makes sense.
Very good, all right. Um, uh, we don't have any old items listed. Policies and procedures, nothing's listed on there. Um, projects, I don't know if I would consider this a project, but, you know, we have had, um, um, we have had the um broadband conversations, SCC challenge is still out there. Um, the county, you know, wants to make sure that if people have the ability to challenge their broadband connectivity, they can do that. We've put a um, a laptop in the commissioner's um conference room and our chief clerk, Pam Mattmays, willing to help those who are still interested in getting online, um, challenging their their broadband connectivity. And that's all I had as far as projects, does anybody have anything else? All right, and we look at the county commissioner meeting, an election board meeting. I don't think we have a need for an election board meeting. Nope, and then the consent agenda, there's three items there. Approve the industrial appraisal agreement, sign a company for reassessment, and then Resolution thirty-two, thirty-six.
I think you want a resolution related to the TAM as well.
Yep, that'd be good, talk about that. And then also the approval of the twenty twenty-three tax mileage.
Oh, that's right.
Ah, yeah, okay, because we've not put that in per se.
Yeah, we just go, yeah, you built the budget based on that.
Right. All right. And there's no change, right?
Yeah, there's no change.
One of the things I wanna update on is um, this week and next week, I'm meeting with several municipalities that are interested in the land bank program signing on or the Yonkers will suppose to pass it this evening. And I'm gonna go to that meeting to just support them in that. Um, I also scheduled a meeting with the school district to discuss both the Larda and the um, uh, land bank and I'm probably gonna recruit a couple of people to come with me to, like municipal leaders to come to pitch it so it isn't just me. In fact, I may just go in disguise and put them in front, um, we'll see.
Is that why you got the haircut?
It's like a big cocky, yeah, yeah. No, um, no, I mean, the school district was nice enough to agree to a meeting. Um, I'm looking forward to talking with them, but again, to get them locked down on this, especially since we're having this discussion about reassessment and that was their big ticket item. Uh, but I just wanna make you aware of that so that if anybody asks you about it or if you have any questions, you can look.
Okay, that's good. Uh, department slash community updates, you and your dealing partner are from here, so that's nothing.
We're good.
All right, any general discussion? I think we kinda did a little bit of that already. And I do not believe we have need for executive session. Okay, all right, work session's ended, thank you everyone.